They're all off. Like, they're weird. Hello?
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Hell of a month today.
Thank you.
Oh no, it's on my pen. I have about ten of them at home.
There's probably like 10,000 back there. Run and grab one real quick. Bridget doesn't have one in there.
Calling to order the Monday, August 12th, 2024, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Vlani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve with the following changes. Moving the communications portion up to just behind number four. And adding to the end of number five, the language, and consider subsequent council action.
Is there a support?
So moved.
Okay. So, motion with corrections made by Mayor Protem Gavin, with support from Councilmember Patterson. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vlani.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the agenda has been approved. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now come to the portion of the meeting where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but that doesn't mean we don't care. If your concern needs to be followed up, there's a sheet outside this door on the table where you can leave your contact information and a member of city staff or department will get back with you. Please direct your comments to the chair. When you come to the microphone, please state your name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Maria Ward. I live at 1838 Rosemont. And I have been a resident of the City of Berkeley for 70-plus years. I don't like to be one of those complaining residents that's constantly coming to the council about issues, but I think the matter I have this evening deserves some attention, or at least reflection. On Tuesday, the 30th of July, I received this communication in this form that was stuck into the handle of my screen door. I found it about four o'clock when I went out to get the mail. It was from the Public Works Department, and they were advising me that the tree in the tree lawn area was going to be removed and that this was a courtesy notice. There was no information about who I could contact or who, a phone number.
Thank you.
As you can see, it's a Xerox copy of a letter. Again, Xerox copy on the letterhead. It was advising me that the tree in my tree lawn was going to have to come down. That's fine. I got it on the 30th. At 8:45 the next morning, the tree service company that you have contracted with was at my house, ready to take the tree down. I think I need a little more notice than 12 hours in order for this to happen. And I wanted to also go to Public Works Department and find out if there was another alternative. So, jumped in my car, drove over to Public Works. Now, I've recently had knee surgery, so my not walking terribly well. So, it's an effort for me to go to Public Works. So, I go over, I show them the letter, I said, "I'd like to speak to the person who's in charge of this." Adam from Public Works, I don't know, he just introduced himself as, "Hi, I'm Adam." Came out. And he said, "Oh yeah, we're taking down a whole bunch of trees." And I said, "Okay." Would there have been a better way to communicate with me?
Three minutes, or three minutes. If you would like follow-up, we're happy to do that. If you would like to email your concern, council@berkleymich.net. And you may also, the city manager and the clerk also will receive that correspondence.
May I make one last concluding remark?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Adriana Allen, and I am a resident of Berkeley for, since I was on this earth. I don't know how to say this. I will be speaking on section 22-42B, limitation on number of animals kept, which only allows a total of three cats and/or dogs. This is a problem because there are so many animals in shelters that probably need a home, and a lot more people could help them. I propose the new ordinance would allow for a total of five animals with no more than three of either type. And I have been giving hints to my parents that I want cats, or preferably another puppy. Yeah. Good evening. Why did I say good evening? Thank you.
Thank you, Adriana.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Locke. I have lived at 2494 Gardner, 2194 Gardner, since September of 1987. Yep, right by the ballfield. Now, they have permitted, without any notice, to any of the residents, they permitted parking on the west side of the street. So, we have this GM park, it's a parking lot. I can hardly get out of my driveway. Don't go anywhere at dinnertime because someone's gonna run over ya. It's crazy. And then now we have soccer, we have for practice, which they should, football, and these kids race down the street. There's no stop sign there, that's just a sign to, decoration only. And they whip around there, nobody stops, nobody gets stopped, there's no police officers around. I talked to Mayor Dean about this. I mean, it is horrible to try to get out of my driveway. I have like a little cook in my driveway. Horrible. And all my neighbors are complaining. Patient, or people are getting out of their cars and letting the kids out in the middle of the street. Really? Are you wanting to get somebody killed? And I've called the Chief of Police. That took three weeks. I called Mayor Dean, right back to me the same day. I talked to, the city manager has never recontacted me. But we've never had this. The other side of Gardner, they complain, their signs are back up. They can, there's no parking on theirs. Ours, we get slammed. I am right at the corner. I mean, right at the corner, so I get it, both sides, all the way around. It is just crazy to see what happens. And people do not listen when you say, "Please don't park on my driveway." I mean, I'm not evil, I don't run out there and, you know, cause a fit. "Oh, yeah, I'm not on your driveway." Really? Can you, I've got pictures. I feel like an old woman out there snapping pictures at all these cars. You know, it's crazy. And we've made it before with no parking on the west side, so why now? And again, no notification to any resident, none. It is just very upsetting, and I find it absurd that we would do this. On that particular street, it was designated a fire lane when I moved in there. We were told that because the school is right there at the corner. So, that was supposed to be the fire lane. There was never any parking since 1987. Here we are, 2024, we have parking. So, I don't understand it. It's ridiculous, when I can't get out of my own driveway. I pay pretty good taxes to live here in the City of Berkeley. I love my home, I don't want to move. But I need some consideration about getting out and being, someone helping me. I mean, I'm like fighting the world against this whole thing. And I've talked to all my neighbors, they all feel the same. People are on vacations this week, so it's kind of a crazy week. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Ed Gold. I live at 2798 Bacon. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. Reason I'm here, like many residents of the City of Berkeley, I have a lot of water in my yard usually. It's getting worse this year than it ever has been. Most of it, I think, is a result of the yard next door to me, which has been regraded over the last couple of years. And it's now graded so that it leans into my yard. It's flooding my garage on a regular basis, flooding my yard. I spend hours each time we have one of our heavy rains. I pump my yard out, I pump my garage out. My garage has to be set up so that everything's up on pallets now. It's rotting out the wood on the base of my walls. The yard is just completely, it's unusable now. And it's now affecting my health because this situation this year is now causing, I believe, a mold issue in my yard. And so, I need help. I've had city guy from the DPW came out, he looked. The, I think Assistant City Manager, or somebody like that, came out, he looked. Nobody can understand what they did to the backyard in this yard. They, it's 2770 Bacon, by the way, that's being my issue. They put some kind of a drainage system in that does nothing other than creates a lake in the backyard. So, it's draining into my backyard, it's ruining the concrete in my garage, it's ruining the patio behind my garage. I can't really use my yard whenever it rains, it takes three or four days to dry out, I can't let my dogs out in the yard very well. Now, it's creating this issue where I go out to clean up my yard, to clean the gutters, to do whatever, and this mold is getting to my breathing. Everybody's got a problem with smoke from wood fires. I quit doing that 20 years ago because it was an issue, but now this is causing me a problem. I've asked the city employees that have come out and looked to try to give me some kind of relief. It's a rental house next door, I don't know who the woman is that owns the house. The tenants don't really, they don't tell me who she is. I need somebody to contact this woman and find out what she did to the yard and correct this issue with the grading so that it's not draining into my yard every time it rains. Anything you can do for me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin McNulty, I live on Royal in the City That Cares. Royal Oaks City Council just approved a new development of 159 units to be called Lincoln Place. Now, back in 1953, they started construction on the 12th Town Sewer Drain. It's a combined sewer of wastewater and rainwater. And it runs from Wicksum Novi all the way through to St. Clair Shores. And with an overflow, it's raw sewage discharged directly into Lake St. Clair. This is irresponsible urban development. Every city has a civic duty to its neighbors. Now, Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, Madison Heights, they're not doing this. Every apartment unit generates at least six toilet flushes. More if you factor in Taco Bell. Two showers, one dishwasher, one load of laundry. That's for every unit. The Griffin has 241 units at 10 Mile and Woodward. The Fifth has 78. The Main North, 92, Worcester, 91, and there's a dozen more high-rise units paying substantial property taxes to the City of Royal Oak. Bully for them. When it rains and the sewer starts filling up, communities have grown since 1953, you can imagine. It starts filling up in Warren, and then in Royal Oak, it hits capacity. Additional rainwater falling on the street goes into the sewer system, and the pressure from the high street forces the water up in your basements through the floor drain. This has got to be stopped. Someone has to complain to Royal Oak that it's a walkable city because there's no place to park. You gotta park in Birmingham. Nobody else is doing this. They have to be stopped before we all drown in our own sewage. Raw sewage in our basements. 2014 was a warning. I can leave this up if you'd like to look at it longer, or I could
No, thank you.
Take it with me.
You can take it with you.
I thank you, and my basement thanks you.
Thank you.
Tell Royal Oak I said so.
Mayor, council, city manager. My name is Eric Wheeler, 2679 Oxford Road. I live directly adjacent to the La Sallete Project, now known as the Ivy. And I wrote in June concerning the level of lighting that was designated for the parking lot there. Back then, I thought it was too much light. It invades my house, my bedroom faces that property, and it makes it difficult to sleep. Mostly, my concerns have been unacknowledged, so I came with a little demonstration. And since I wrote, the lighting level has increased as of two weeks ago, and then again over the last couple of days. And so, this really starts to present a problem that, on some of these hot days, I cannot leave my windows open, I cannot have my curtains open if I want to go out and enjoy the meteor shower that's coming tonight. The level of noise pollution is so great that I can't see the sky. And so, I'm hoping that something can be done about this. The new lights that they've installed are wall mount packs. They are angled out from the building, so they don't serve a purpose for lighting the building itself. There's no shielding or anything. This is all like aimed at the residential houses. And Berkeley is a residential city, it's not a, it's not Brooklyn, it's not Ann Arbor, it's not downtown Detroit. And so, if you think this is a bit harsh, if you think this is a bit glaring, you should experience it seven days a week, from sundown to sunup. And it's worse than this because the contrast level is greater than what you're seeing in this room right now, so. It's about like this, I can show you photos on my phone that make it look like a car is driving through my window, or a train is driving through my yard coming at me. So, I'm hoping that you can address this with the developer. Maybe their objective is to annoy me to the point that I sell the house and move away, and then they can buy it and put up more apartment buildings, or put a service road going from Oxford to Harvard, I don't know what they want to do. But, all they have to do is come with a check, and I'll sell. Because I can't take this anymore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If you come up here with lights.
No, I can hardly, Joel Alfred's Berkeley on Oakshire. Yeah, I can't follow either of those. But I did hear a common thread. And I just wanted to say the retreat you held July 30th was really good regarding the city's mission and vision. Look forward to seeing those minutes at, I believe, the next meeting. In the spirit of teamwork, I sacrificed some sleep recently, and, well, an hour or two. And because I still had questions regarding parking issues, and hopefully those can be answered later. But, just generally speaking, for the most part, I think staff's been pretty good about answering questions, and I think we can do better financially disclosing budget items or fund transfers that may or may not have been approved.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor. My name is Jay Sanders. I have been a homeowner in Berkeley now for 13 years. I live on Dorothea, near Cass. I am also the 2024 Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors Treasurer. I have served in this community as a Realtor broker for more than 20 years. Mr. Wheeler, I sold him the house that he lives in. And he caught me very frustrated. I decided to do some investigation on my own, and I drove down his street at sundown. And then I drove down his street at about 10 o'clock at night. Near his home, the lighting is extremely, extremely bright. I was shocked. In fact, when I turned down his street, it blinded me trying to get into his driveway. And so, I want to let you know that the lights not only are extremely bright, but also potentially dangerous for residents who are driving what would be east onto Oxford, facing, going toward Coolidge. If you are going east on Oxford, I recommend that you all try that at night. You will see exactly what I'm referring to, and what he's referring to. And it will also certainly detract from me being able to sell his home. Because nobody will want to live near those bright lights. Thank you for your time, and I hope that, as not only a property owner here in Berkeley, but also as a Realtor in this community, I hope that you will address his concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Ms. Mitchell, have you received any correspondence to be entered into the record this evening?
I have not.
Okay. I'm gonna close public comments then. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, July 22nd, 2024. Joint City Council Meeting on Tuesday, July 9th, 2024. And City Council Work Session on Monday, July 22nd, 2024. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1401. Three, resolution number R1924, matter of approving participation in the Thai Michigan T.O. campaign to promote awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms. Four, motion number M6724, matter of considering a participa- considering participation in the National Opioid Settlement and authorize the interim city manager to sign participation agreements on the city's behalf. Five, proclamation number P1424, matter proclaiming September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Month. Six, proclamation number P1524, matter proclaiming September 2024 as National Recovery Month. Seven, proclamation number P1624, matter proclaiming September 2024 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Eight, proclamation number P1724, matter proclaiming September 2024 as National Preparedness Month. Nine, proclamation number P1824, matter of recognizing Mark Kuhn for his years of Cruz Fest service.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Black. Are there any changes or corrections? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vlani.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions Presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
So, I've asked Councilmember Patterson to read P1624.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming September 2024 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, 43 children in the United States will be diagnosed with cancer each day at an average age of six years old. And those diagnosed, one out of five children will not survive the disease. And whereas, pediatric cancer is not just one disease, but is made up a dozen types of subtypes of cancer. These types of cancers are most often very different from those affecting adults. And whereas, pediatric cancers can be diagnosed in children regardless of their gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, pediatric cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in the United States, children under 15 years of age surpassing that of AIDS, asthma, cystic fibrosis, diabetes, and muscular dystrophy combined. And whereas, the causes of most pediatric cancers are largely unknown and not strongly linked to lifestyle, unlike adult cancers. And whereas, 2/3 of pediatric cancer patients will develop long-lasting chronic conditions resulting from their treatment. And whereas, the pediatric cancer rates have been rising in the past decades, and approximately 1,000, 14,910 adolescents in the U.S. under the age of 19 will be diagnosed with cancer in 2024. And whereas, in the last 25 years, only three drugs have been specifically developed for children's cancer. And whereas, less than 5% of federal government's total funding for cancer research is dedicated to childhood cancers. Only about 4% of funds raised for the National Cancer Institute go directly to pediatric cancer research. And funding for pediatric cancer research has continued to steadily decrease since 2003. And whereas, despite major advancement in treatment, it is still critically important to conduct research and increase awareness regarding pediatric cancer. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1, that the month of September 2024 is hereby proclaimed as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley. Proclaim this 12th day of August, 2024, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Sign, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Kuhn, would you please come up to the podium?
Yes.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, in appreciation of Mark Kuhn for his dedication to the success of the Berkeley Cruz Fest. Whereas, Mark Kuhn has been involved with the planning and coordination of the Berkeley Cruz Fest for more than 20 years. And whereas, Mark, a known car enthusiast, has left an impression on thousands of spectators lining the streets of 12 Mile each year that is difficult to capture with words. capture with words. And whereas, the impact of Mark's hard work is evident in every detail of the event. His passion has created a lasting legacy with invaluable contributions. And whereas, (cough) excuse me, Mark's unwavering commitment to the Berkeley Cruise Fest has set a remarkable standard moving forward. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims Section 1, that the City Council, on behalf of all local residents, is offering its genuine thanks to Mark Kuhn for his years of hard work and dedication. And Section 2, the City Council invites the Berkeley community to join them in congratulating Mark on the incredible work that has been done. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, August 12, 2024, Bridgette Dean, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Talk to us.
Sure. Thank you very much. Very kind words. I appreciate it. The thing is, though, is that this has never been about me. It's always been about, it's not just me. It's there's hundreds of volunteers that have pulled this event off, and many of them were in groups that sold merchandise, that raised money for kids, and for things that went back into the community. I'd like to name, I think I've got them all, but I'm not certain, and that's the Berkeley Athletic Boosters, Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance, Moms Club Softball, Tri-Community Coalition, Berkeley Days, Friends of Parks and Rec, Berkeley Junior Women's Club, Hoops Basketball, Football Backers and Robotics Team. So those last two, what they did was they picked, for a number of years, they picked up trash on Woodward. And I can tell you from experience, that's a daunting task at 9:00 at night, because there's cars, there's people, there's police, there's thunderstorms, and my wife getting caught in a Portageon in a thunderstorm was probably one of the funniest things that ever happened. But that being said, the thing is, is that for about 26 years, I think, because we're not doing it this year, but for 26 years, we sold merchandise on Woodward. And on average, every year, there was probably about, it was split between the city. So the city got about $10,000 a year on average. The community service groups got about $10,000 a year on average. That's over 26 years, so it's like $260,000 that those community service groups, (cough) excuse me, put back into the community. And it was, almost all of them was for kids. And it was to help kids so that they, I mean, Huntington Woods Youth Assistance, they raise money just to send kids to camp. And that's, you know, that's a big thing. And the thing was, was that in doing that, it wasn't at, it was, the way it was done, it was not at the burden of the city, like the Parks and Rec Department, except for the last few years, because they took over a lot of it. But I remember back in the day, us volunteers, we were in charge of running the merchandise back and forth. It stayed in the parking lot over here, and we would run it up there. We would unload it. We would, the groups would help us. Then they would sell it all night. Then we would make the drops. We would do all that stuff. That was all volunteer-driven, the entire event, except for the Friday and the Saturday of the event. Then there was Parks and Rec people that would come and do pickups at the rest of the booths. But on behalf of them, I accept this, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Don't go anywhere. Council, any comments before Mark takes his seat?
Just a heartfelt thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Truly, from the bottom of our hearts, we appreciate all your efforts and all your work. Thank you so much. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's agenda.
Presentation. Matter of receiving a presentation from Communications Director Caitlin Flora regarding the city's new website.
Director Flora, we can't wait to hear.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is Caitlin Flora, and I'm the Director of Communications for the City of Berkeley. So this is a very exciting month. It's been a really heavy lift to get to this point, but I'm so excited to be in the home stretch and to announce that our new website will be launching in the month of August. The number one goal of this new website is that it will be more user-friendly, so the most utilized areas will be easier to find and navigate to, and it's organized and streamlined in a more intuitive way. It's also much more modernized, reflecting our updated brand identity that's been breathing life into all of our communications over various channels for the past few years. We also like to refer to this as the digital doors to City Hall that never close. So of course, you will still be more than welcome to call and come in, but we know that life can get hectic and busy. So the number one goal of this new website redesign will be to create the website that doesn't require an additional call or stopping by one of our departments, just to understand how to navigate to what you need. So with that new website launching this month, we will be moving to a .gov domain. But don't worry, our current domain will still forward to the .gov domain once it's launched, so that transition will be seamless. And so the .gov domain is really exciting because it is really important to be as clear as possible that crucial information is coming from a verified, accurate source. The .gov domain will help with that, because anyone can pay to register a .com or .org domain, but only governments can register as a .gov domain. And so going along with that, someone acting in bad faith, maybe hoping to trick someone into clicking a fake link, can't create something that uses the .gov domain. An extra layer of trust and security that the information you'll be accessing and the links to do the things like pay your bill, for example, knowing that that's actually officially from the city is very important. I just want to point out, we have not had any security issues or anything like that with our current website, but in this current day and age, it's better to be safe than sorry. And then finally, I wanted to share a couple of exciting digitized processes that will hopefully make life easier for all of our residents. Our Community Development Department recently launched BSNA Online, which means that you can now apply for some of the most commonly needed permits and certificates and schedule inspections at bsaonline.com instead of needing to come in. And then the second point, you'll hear a little bit more about a little bit later on this agenda, but staff is working to transition our temporary overnight parking permit process from in-person to online. So before, if you needed to park your car on the street overnight temporarily, you had to actually drive to our public safety building and fill out paperwork to register for a paper pass to display on your dashboard. A new online system means that you'll be able to register right from the comfort of your own home if you so need that that night. I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity to share this preview, and I really look forward to this vision finally becoming reality, continuing to improve our communications and offerings. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Any questions from Council for Director Flora? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Caitlin, is this going to be a moving project, meaning obviously we're going to launch it, but then are you going to change it annually, or...
Yes. Well, I mean, as needed, it'll still be changed, and that's kind of what we do right now on our current website. So something that's really nice about this new one, when it's launched, is that right on the homepage, there's an option to fill out a website feedback form. So I will definitely be really interested in any feedback, anything that we can do to make the new website more user-friendly, as I mentioned.
Well, Caitlin, I just want to say I really appreciate your dedication and diligence to this project. I know what a heavy lift it was, and I know when you walked in, it was kind of like, mm, but you were not deterred, and you did it with professionalism and precision. And I really appreciate all the attention to detail and getting this across the finish line. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for saying that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's regular agenda.
Resolution number R2024. Matter of designating Saturday, December 7, 2024, for the annual holiday parade and tree lighting ceremony in Berkeley. The approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve R2024?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Guinezer?
Yes. Victoria is going to help support me on this item. She's going to walk through kind of the event and some of its history, and then I'm going to walk through some discussion we need to have about one of the unanswered things. I need some help and direction on in order to complete this process. So with that, Victoria, can you start?
Sure. We, the community special event application for the annual Holiday Lights Parade and Tree Lighting Ceremony was submitted to the Clerk's Office, and it was reviewed by all applicable department directors who signed off and provided further information regarding any additional requirements. The application approval is conditional upon receiving the Certificate of Liability Insurance, which the insurance carrier did state would be provided to the city 60 days before the event. Approval is also conditional upon verification of the application information. And as you all know, this is a very longstanding event in the community, and the applicant is here this evening.
Great.
So the piece that I need some help with, or staff needs some assistance with, is on the policy regarding community special event cost reimbursement. I had a chance with staff to sit down with Cindy and Roseanne probably about a month and a half, maybe two months ago, to talk through what we might expect from this. Where I need some guidance is, originally, I was thinking, we're going to have a discussion about an interim civic event policy tonight, but I'm not ready for that. But we have this unanswered item of what the cost reimbursement is supposed to be. The way the fee schedule was updated in June of last year essentially says it's 100% reimbursement. The challenge with that, and I'm not speaking just about the Holiday Lights Parade, but I'm talking about all of our events, to go from zero to 100, especially when you're relying largely on sponsorships and what have you, that can, it's doable, but it's a lift, and a lot of times, it takes time to adjust. The other part that I'm trying to work through here is trying to piece together how it's worked since the civic event fee schedule was updated last June. To the best of what I've been able to decipher, the only other event that there's been a discussion about a reimbursement is Art Bash. And to what I can tell, there was discussions with Art Bash about what we estimated the cost to be, and the information I was able to get was that estimated amount was what, excuse me, the chamber was expecting to pay. We have not billed them yet, but that would be right around 4,100. Actual costs came in higher than that, because, and again, I don't know all the timing here, because I'm still relatively new, but in a more recent history, we've switched to a digital tracking of our time system. So now we can better track actual costs for things like special events and civic events. So actual costs ended up being at 10.6. At this point in time, the chamber is not expecting that difference, and depending on what we talk about tonight, I'm not, wasn't planning on billing them, but we'll see what we all come up with tonight. Well, when you do that math, based on what they were expecting versus actual, that comes up to be right around 40%. If we apply that same logic here, it would be less than what we had originally talked with Cindy and Roseanne about. Total estimated cost for this event is $11,371.36. At 40%, that would put us at just over 4,500, so 45, 48, 54. What I want to add to this is, I know we've talked about, we need to have a save event conversation here, not just about fees, but in general. But what the fee schedule doesn't tell me is, when we talk about actual costs, are we talking about just DPW and DPS, or are we talking about all city costs? That's not clearly identified there. Are we talking about the cost of just the day of, or are we talking about all the costs? For example, we don't have a system in place for Cruise Fest or anything like that. The city's been handling the planning, but let's use it as an example. Today, we had a roomful of people working on the final planning. It's not the day of the event, is that, should that be calculated into the cost? And a number of other details. So we're trying to work our way through this as best as possible without a formalized policy around this fee structure. So I'm looking for guidance on how we should fill in that blank around cost reimbursement. I think the 40% is a place to start. It's, I hate to use the word reasonable, but it's more manageable than the higher amount, and it still does provide, it does move the city in the direction that you were all setting forth based on trying to cover some of these costs, extensive city costs for civic events. I'll guarantee you, when we go to put all this information together, you're spending well over 100 grand a year on civic and special events. But it moves you towards a reimbursement policy, whatever you ultimately decide that level to be. So that's the missing gap. And with that, I turn it back to you, Madam Mayor and Council, and obviously, the applicant is here in person. If there's any other questions for them.
Thank you. Comments or questions from Council on this?
The funding policy?
I'm sorry.
Starting with the funding policy?
Sure, wherever you want.
Yeah. I think to start now, to be fair, the 40% that's recommended, you know, I think for both events, that's fair. That's what they're expecting. And longer term, I don't know, longer term, 100% may be cost prohibitive, and then we lose some of these events. But we also do not have the money we used to have to be able to subsidize these things. So we do need to find, if we do eventually choose a larger amount, I think it needs to be phased in over time. And I think that it would be fair, those events that are, I think this was mentioned in the memo, that are Berkeley organizations, Berkeley-specific, you know, those are more willing to subsidize. Someone that's coming in from outside of Berkeley and running a road race purely for profit, they pull the full amount. And so far as what, how much, you know, do you do the day of, or, you know, everything? I want to say everything, but I also know that becomes more of an administrative burden. You have much more to track. And does it become reasonable, and does that drive the costs up so much? So it may also just depend on the complexity of the event. If it's, you know, a smaller event, it's not going to be that much staff time. If it's much larger, it is going to require a lot of extra time. That is real money and real opportunity cost from other things. So I don't have definite answers, but that's kind of direction of what I'm thinking.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Were you finished? Were you going to say something else?
Yeah, I was finished.
I just, very similar opinion. We're asking our volunteers to put these events on for our residents. A lot of these events, they're not profit-generated events, but we're charging these groups to do it for all of us to enjoy. It's not like that specialized event that only their group is getting. You know, everyone comes to some of these events, for most people. I don't know, as far as the staff time, when we initiated that year, that fee schedule, I don't know if we were utilizing the staff time to the ability that we had. So I think we were guessing, you know, estimating, I guess, is better than guessing, but estimating sounds better. So maybe use this year as a trial, see, you know, calculate it out, but obviously, it's going to be higher than I think we anticipated. And I thank Councilmember Henan for the other, much better said than I mean.
Councilmember Black?
Yeah, the thing I would say is, and as you said, you know, civic event policy, I think as a community, we have to decide what do we want our, what events need to be our non-negotiables? What are what we would call our staples, right? So if we say Holiday Lights is a staple, and Cruise Fest is a staple, then I think we work the policy from there, because then we know, no matter what, these are our two non-negotiable events. We're going to do them. We can plan for them. And then maybe we say every event under that, we have to look at in some type of sliding scale. But at the very least, if we, if we know that these are our flagship events, or we decide what our flagship events are going to be, then that at least gives us some variable of control to be able to say, okay, we need to set this much aside. We need this many volunteers, because we know, no matter what, these are going to be our two. And then after that, I think we can kind of set the policy around our culminating events as a community. That's my feeling on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Vilani?
Want to just echo general alignment with my colleagues on this issue, and then just also note that, you know, these organizations have very, I think this is putting... just also note that, you know, these organizations have very, I think this is putting it gently, shoestring budgets. And as the representative liaises on with like Berkeley Area Chamber, for example, knowing that, you know, just even the amount that we're charging now is a significant hit to their budget when they have very little to begin with. And many of these events are also designed to bring traffic into the city and supports the growth of our city, and, you know, when you talk to many of the business owners, the days of the event, they talk about, you know, that is literally my best day of business of the year, and that our downtown districts, our stores, our anchors, all of that, are just so important to who we are as a city, bringing people here, and it's part of our value proposition as a city. I think we need to keep that in mind as well when we talk about, like, what are those stakeholder events, and how do we define, you know, where we want to help support, and, you know, maybe there's ways to leverage, like, DDA funds, other things, if it's going to help grow the city versus it is just for maybe an economic interest of a specific organization.
Thank you.
Everybody said it very well. I agree.
Perfectly. I would add, oh, dude.
After you go first.
So I do think it's important to know the actual cost of an event. And to Councilmember Henin's point, I don't know how burdensome that would be if we can ballpark estimate, because I think that we are unaware of all the behind-the-scenes, all the moving parts, and all that it takes to get an event off the ground. And I'm talking from the city services side, in addition to all the volunteers, all the other groups that are doing. Not to say that we have to charge that, but I think it, it paints a picture and shows and tells residents and the community, this is what this costs to do. We love it, you love it, we're committed to it, but this is the actual cost. Now, if you get sponsorship, if you get donations, things like that, then that can whittle away that cost, and depending what, where we land on a policy, so for now, I'm right in on this 40%, I think that's fair, and I think it's fine for now. How we decide to move forward with it, I think that we need to take into account the total cost, but then, to Councilmember Black's point, what are our flagship events? And I would also throw in the Chalk Art Fest and Art Bash as well. So, and not that that's written in stone, and not that that's what it has to be, but those seem to be, those four seem to be the things that we kind of are known for, and that are quintessentially Berkeley. So lots of discussion and thought, I think, needs to happen. I don't want to have any undue burden to any group right now, but I also think an honest conversation that really illustrates the total cost to put on these events needs to also be known, so that then we know, okay, what are we, what are we embracing, what are we deferring, what are, again, what's important to us? So. In a minute, please, we're just, we're back and forthing right now. Councilmember Henin?
So I, I do have a little discomfort picking favorites, you know, if there's not an objective standard, and we use the Chalk Art Fest as an example. It, it is very new, and so it's first year. Would we have, we don't know how it's going to go, would we have picked it as one of the good ones, or the, you know, the bad ones? Well, not good or bad, not good or bad, one of the, one of the subsidized or unsubsidized. So, so I think, I think it needs to be an objective standard. We, we do have the purview, we can, if we choose, say, as a council, well, these events are the ones we are going to want, but events do come and go, and so it could squeeze out new events that could potentially have been successful with a different standard.
Sure.
So just closing from a staff standpoint, I mean, the conversation you all are having are exactly the conversation we're, we're working towards. I'm hoping to be ready to start that conversation in September. A number of communities in this region, outside this region, have been through this exact conversation, and you will find policies ranging anywhere from you pay absolutely nothing to you pay 100%, and 100% might be right down the road. So it is all about that value proposition and that judgment, and then the whole conversation that we've been having financially around here about needs versus wants.
Right.
Within the currently available resources. So that's kind of the, where this conversation will continue to go, so.
Perfect. Do you have enough direction tonight to?
Well, I'm, I'm going to ask, I mean, obviously, you're going to have some questions, or looks like we're going to have some conversation with Cindy, or Ms. Kuhn, I should be proper here, but I would ask that the motion be amended to reflect whatever that is that you all have co-est around.
Thank you. Did you have something else?
You know, I, I was just going to say that I think that this might be a good opportunity to maybe put a poll question on our new website, and let the community have input into, you know, what are, what are our staple events? I think we, I think it's good to have that established, and just say, like, hey, look, these are, let the community tell us, whether it's Holiday Lights, or Berkeley Days, or Cruise Fest, or seems like a really, really good thing for our new website. Plug, plug.
Thank you. Councilmember Henin?
I'll, I'll just make one comment on sort of survey design. If you tell people what do they want, they want everything, you kind of need to show them also what are the costs, and what might they have to give up to have that, because if we just list every event, a lot of people will just say, yeah, I want everything. So, so it's, I like the sentiment, but it, you know, to get good data out of it, we have to properly design it as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? You're on.
My name is Cindy Kuhn. I have been the chairman of the holiday parade since we took it over from the men's club 20 years ago. On the parade side of it, okay, we realize that nothing is free, nothing is, okay? People who participate in the parade aren't free.
Right.
So we seek sponsors, and for this, I mean, we had a wonderful donor who is Mr. Duffy, who wanted to see this go on every year, gave us $5,000 every single year until he passed. And it was at that time that Mayor Turbrack said, I don't want to see it go away, and it became a one act. If we needed it, we used it, okay? We took it three years, okay, and it was a $5,000. With that being said, we understand, we have been 100% volunteers on this committee. They're all residents, everybody from picking up garbage, tying off streets, okay? It has been our joy that our public safety has stepped in, so if you know what we can tie off the streets, we're out there, we can tie off the streets. Our wonderful DPW, okay, will make sure that we have the garbage boxes up, for the tree lighting, which is a totally different group that does that, and they've done that for 30 years. And so we were 100% volunteers, and I want it to stay majority volunteers. So whatever we can do to reduce costs, because I'll tell you right now, when the numbers get thrown out of 15,000 and this and that, we can't do it, not at, not at this present time, we can't, we can't, it, it costs us, we have enough money to put on the parade this year, right now, with no fees, okay? And so after that, we'll see, you know? We, of course, always take, we have our wonderful chamber who donates and sponsors here, and our DDA does, and when we have, you know, resident sponsors and other small businesses that sponsor, and, you know, we thank God for that, because that is just, that keeps us going. So that's our side of it, but there's no, like, there's no huge fund that's, you know, waiting there for us or whatever. So that's, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council?
I just want to add one thing, and it's, it's not, please don't take it as a retort, it's, again, part of this larger conversation that we're going to have, because, I mean, I love the volunteer aspect. I think that's what, especially, probably everybody in this room has volunteered for an event at one point in time or another. Unfortunately, the world that we live in necessitates that, that we cannot rely on volunteers as much as we used to, because unfortunately, like we saw today in our Cruise Fest planning, we have to be now talking about emergency management, and things that we don't want to be thinking about, and proper barricading, so we don't have cars going places they shouldn't be going.
Right.
All these things, and so now, unfortunately, that role for the volunteer is growing smaller and smaller from an emergency management and a liability standpoint. So I agree, like, where we can find this balance, we're all for it, but that's going to, that's part of that larger policy discussion that you all have to have when we think about the cost of these events. It's not, we shouldn't be having these events because they cost too much money. That's not the conversation.
Right. Thank you. Questions, discussion? Jack, do you need to say something?
I'd just like to make a statement. As you know, I plan most of the events, and what I'm concerned is that by raising the price to the groups that come, you're encouraging them to be less safe. Because I put a lot of things into these events to make it safe, but they cost money. Now, if I didn't do that, they could buy cheaper.
Right.
Why are we going to survive? We base our planning on activities, we monitor terrorist activities all over the world, we get feedback from female, we get feedback from the Senate, you know, all the intelligence agencies, and that's how we do our planning. So we have to be careful. I'll give you an example. On the Chalk Art Fest, we've got trucks blocking the road. We don't have to have trucks blocked, that's expensive. We can have a barricade there, that a car could push right down the road. It would look good, be less safe. So we have to decide what we're going to do, and make sure that we do it in a manner that doesn't encourage us to be less safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, so there you have it. I just, I have a couple of questions. So I know that you are applying for 501(c)(3) status, and where is that in the process?
We're working on the, we had the paperwork finished and everything, and unfortunately, that volunteer is no longer with us.
Okay.
But we are working on the paperwork.
Perfect.
We tell you, a 501(c)(3) would garner larger contributions.
Absolutely.
Bigger corporations and stuff like that, but we've also had DTE, we've had big corporate sponsors in the past.
Sure.
So it's, is a 501(c)(3) mandatory? No, okay? Do we want to? Yes, absolutely, we do.
I agree. I mean, if, if I'm going to contribute to something, you know, make a donation to something, I certainly want it to be tax deductible, and I think you're right, I think it'll open up more opportunities for you for, for funding, and I hope that that's the way it works. I'm, and then, so that's pending, as is the insurance, but I know Eagle Rock's.
Yep, he's been our.
Yeah.
Tom's been our guy for 20 years.
Perfect. So, you know, for me, conditional to the insurance, obviously, if the 501(c)(3) comes through, that's, that's the, yeah, that's the critical thing, so once we have proof of that, I would support this event. Councilmember Black, do you have?
Yeah. And all of our, all of our, like, our petting zoo, they carry their own insurance, our horse and carriages carry their own insurance, but we get a rider on all of it, so, yes.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, and I guess this, this question before Emergency Manager Blanchard, having just gone through very intense anti-terrorism officer training last month, where cost was probably about 40% of it, when you talk about the cost, Mr. Blanchard, are you talking about the cost of, of materials, or are you talking about the cost of implementation, meaning what it costs for us to, to buy and utilize, or what we already have in terms of implementation, if that makes sense, sir?
My brother was talking about is the labor we have to have to install, with what we have now, to put in additional barricades. With public safety, we need to put in Overwatch on top of some of the buildings, we may be talking about drones, we have to, in a lot of cases, have the Sheriff's Department helicopter flying around, those types of things. We have pretty much what we need right now, other than a drone, which we may be talking about.
And, and then last question, is, sir, is there a set, is there, is there a base cost? If I have, like, if we have an event, and we say, okay, Holiday Lights, is there a base floor plan for that versus Cruise Fest? Is there a base floor plan for that in terms of?
No, not a cost plan, no.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Palani?
If somebody wants to donate, how would they? Current, like, if I, if I want to donate, how would I to your Holiday Lights Parade?
You can donate to the Holiday Lights Parade.
And that, online, or?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
We have a Facebook page, we have a.
Perfect.
Email. Yes.
They can, they can drop a check off at the lunch cafe?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yes, true check at home.
All right. Anything else?
Ash.
Okay. I, I understand. Is there any other public comment on this event? I don't want to not allow that. Okay, I see cheering in the, yeah, perfect.
I have to say, I have, when I worked for the chamber, I served on the committee, and I've stepped up now that I'm not part of.
This is Roseanne Nicolai, by the way.
Yes, I'm Roseanne Nicolai, I've been a resident since 97, of Berkeley, currently, but we're very excited, there's been more new blood in the committee, so we're very excited. We've got a new website that started, and that will have electronic entry forms, so we think it'll be more efficient.
Nice.
We can't look to registration forms all online, so we're, we're almost complete, and.
Great.
Yeah, so there's a lot of new blood in the segment for this parade, and, but yes, we can't do it without community support.
Yes.
This is, if we do, and there's changes in policy of, you know.
Mm-hmm.
We have free marching bands already, so.
All right.
So we do have a good hope. It's going to be a great, great, great parade this year.
Great, thank you.
Um, what is that website?
Oh, yeah.
So.
Berkeley Holiday.
BerkeleyHolidayParade.com.
Okay. BerkeleyHolidayParade.com, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Geinzer, are you, oh, no.
This is child, um, yeah, I guess I won't hold him, I don't really. I have Jordan come up in the chair. He's also a financial hit in my ass, I get that aspect, but I know he would be very sad if Sam wasn't coming down.
Oh. Look at that face.
Well played.
Yeah, thank you.
That face.
Yeah. I mean, so are we also incorporating this 40%, if that's where council is?
If that's where council's at, I would like the motion amended to include that in the resolution.
That was your motion, right?
Yeah, I can make a motion.
Just amending the motion to.
Oh, sure, I'll make a amendment to the motion to approve, where am I?
Do you need a dollar amount or a percent?
Put 40%.
Just 40%.
40%, yeah.
And, thank you. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on R. 2024?
Henin?
Yes.
Pedersen?
Yes.
Falani?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Deet?
Yes, the resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M. 6824, matter of adopting the City of Berkeley annual overnight parking policy.
Is there a motion to approve M. 6824?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin with support from Councilmember Black. Mr. Geinzer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just briefly, we've been through this conversation a few times now, the ordinance was approved. Most recently, this is the policy that would be used to help implement that report. I'll let Director Kapalansky walk through anything that I miss here, but essentially, this policy is the same that you saw at your work session, with the exception of the changes that were discussed, and we've also. And we've also left a blank as far as the annual parking pass fee, because there seemed to be a little bit of difference where council might be at on that. Based on our research, we're still okay with the 300.
Okay.
I think the other most noteworthy change that was incorporated in here is we have added, the garage does count as a space. I know that was a big part of conversation at our last study session. And with that, Director Kapalansky, hopefully I didn't take too much away from your introduction.
No, not at all.
Good evening.
Good evening. I was going to keep this fairly in brief, too, instead of walking through the whole policy again, which we have the opportunity to do several meetings ago. The two items that we've talked through at the work session that council directed staff to look at as part of approval of the second reading were the provision of hardships in the parking policy for the annual parking permit, and then also the staff investigation. So, I will leave it up to council if they want me to read the hardships, if there's anyone watching at home that maybe hasn't, yes?
Sure.
Yeah, me as well.
So, I'll just quickly read them. These two hardships for annual parking permit. Residences located on a corner lot. Residences threatening access to the driveway. Residences that have more vehicles registered to their residence than can fit in the driveway without blocking the sidewalk. Residences with driveways narrower than 80. Residences with driveways being not permanent, needing handicap accessibility. Residences with essential work underway in a dumpster that will be located in the driveway for more than 30 days. And lastly, residences that have more drivers with their own vehicles that can fit in the driveway, staying on the property for more than 30 days. And that would be verified via an additional driver vehicle affidavit as part of the application process. At that work session where we discussed those hardships provisions, and a staff investigation, also also provide additional direction regarding the garage, for staff to collect and report data on implementation, and then the consideration of the alternative. The only couple things, other things that I wanted to point out is that public safety investigation would be primarily conducted via aerial photo review and a records review. There may be limited cases where they do need to go onsite to investigate, but that would not be the default. That's okay.
And then the last thing I want to point out is that we would recommend six-month reviews that would include, amongst some other data, data collection on the number of annual parking permits, the hardships identified for annual parking permits, the number of on-street parking tickets issued between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m., and then the number of cars on the streets between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m. But we're open to recommendations on alternate intervals as well.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Blaney?
Hi, thank you. Director Kapalansky, I have just a clarifying question about who or how the permit is issued. So, if a household qualifies for and goes through the application process, is the permit, I was going through the language here, is it allocated to the residence or the resident? So, for example, if there's three drivers, two parking spaces, can they move that permit around between cars as they do the Berkeley Car Shuffle? Or is it car A only as that permit?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because there's two types of permits when we're looking at the policy. There's the annual parking permit and the temporary parking permit. So, the temporary parking permit would be allocated to the vehicle, and there's 15 per year per plate. The annual parking permit is allocated to the household. So, it's actually something that would hang from the rearview mirror, and it could be moved to whatever car the residents, so choose.
I think that makes a lot of sense for, you know, families, and especially as you think about, you know, maybe households that have different types of cars, like electric cars, things like that, that may even require charging, all of that. I think that's great, the way you have that set up.
I have maybe two questions. The residence located on a corner, why corners and not, why was that included?
Yeah, so we did an aerial review of the city generally, staff worked on that. And it's certainly not every case, but in a lot of cases, those corner lots cannot park in the driveway without blocking the sidewalk. And a complaint that public safety frequently gets, and I don't want to speak for Lieutenant Copernick, I'm sure you could illustrate that more, but is that people are parked in their driveway, which is great, but they're blocking the sidewalk, and now I have to go in the street to get around them. So, a lot of the corner lots are set up like that, with the garage on the side street, and it's located very near to the sidewalk, so they don't have the space to park. And we were also looking at staff resources in terms of these investigations. We were trying to strike a balance between the amount of staff time and the amount of staff we have available to do these investigations versus making sure that people who are applying for and getting these annual parking permits legitimately need them.
And it's not a limit, correct?
For the annual parking permit, there would not be a limit.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, maybe touch on the garage for a bit. After we had discussed, you know, allow garages, but also counting garages as one car, you know, I had written into staff that my intent, I don't know anyone else's intent, was that that corner garage still counts for one car, you can still fit a car in that. I've changed my mind since then. I've gone around and looked at a lot of the corner garages, and they are really tiny. A whole lot of them, especially on corner lots, are really, really tiny. Now, so, I'm okay starting with us with all corner lots, you know, automatically allowed. And then us revisiting, did that work out? Was it abused? Do we then need to change it? And it is this striking the balance between staff time and, and, you know, doing what's right. So, if we find that it's abused, we can, it will take more staff time, but then we can move in that direction. I had three small requests I wanted to make. The first would be, instead of a six-month check-in interval, if we could do it at three months, at least the first time. And that would be three months from when you start handing out permits, it wouldn't be three months from tonight. So, so I, I don't know what my colleagues think of that, and if staff would be okay with that.
Why? What do you feel we're going to gain in three versus six? I guess would be my question.
If there is something obvious, you know, we don't know. And so if there is something obvious but very bad going on that we don't like, we have a three-month interval instead of a six-month interval before we find out, and so we can act more nimbly. Am I expecting something like that? No, but I want to be prepared in case something like that comes up, so that we can, you know, react nimbly. And I think after that, a six-month interval, you know, until we get more is probably satisfactory.
So, is it six months, when you say we, are you talking about council or staff?
Staff.
Okay.
Staff.
Alright.
Mr. Geinzer?
So, I mean, ultimately, if council's looking for a view at three months, we're not going to argue on that or fight you on that. I mean, that's, clearly, we're stepping in into new areas, and we want to see how it goes. But I just want to reassure council, you know, I may not be here, but I'm sure that if staff finds something that is egregious, that needs to be addressed, we're not going to wait for that three-month interval. We're going to come at two months if there's really something that we need to work through.
Thank you.
With that, I'm comfortable with six, if everyone else is, okay.
I'm fine with six.
Comfortable with six with, please tell us if something's going sideways.
I have a feeling we might hear about it, yeah.
I'm sure we'll probably hear. One thing that was ambiguous to me was a vehicle with a pass and a trailer, are they allowed to park, or can we prohibit trailers, you know, attached to those cars? Someone with, you know, maybe the temporary permit, and they have a trailer, that's 15 times a year at most. Not as big of a deal as someone with a landscape trailer that's parking out on the street all year long, so...
We could prohibit that.
Okay.
So, I want, for the annual parking permit?
Yes.
No trailers, and I would assume that would include recreational vehicles and anything attached to the car?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll think of how to word that, but yes, we could, we could do that.
So, and then, the last thing would be on the actual application form, just how there's often the, you know, if you falsified information, these are the penalties, and just that short checkbox. Just to remind people, there are consequences if they try and cheat the system here.
We've got no issues with those, and quite honestly, the checkbox might be something we want to have, look and make sure it's on our other forms, too, where applicable.
Perfect.
So, those are, those are my only concerns.
Councilmember Black?
Yeah, as, as someone who would more than likely be utilizing this for teen drivers who love to lose things, are we going to have language in there for replacement? So, and what are we looking at for that in terms of, and how easy would it be to?
Yeah, so, the team, the staff team that was working on this was waiting to see if council approved the policy before we got into all of the nitty-gritty of implementation. What we talked about initially is if you were to lose your pass, you'd pay the costs of actually replacing the hard plastic pass. And then there would also be an application fee that you would need to pay again, and then we would log those, they're serialized, so we can see, you know, what's been issued, what's been lost, what's been reissued, et cetera, et cetera. That's where our initial talks were going, but there's quite a bit that we have to do behind the scenes if council approves this policy tonight to roll this out to the public, and also to make sure we have all of our pieces in a row for things like that.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I know we talked a little bit about this at the work session, but I just kind of want to revisit it just slightly in the vein of, you know, a new, kind of a new program, you know, we don't really necessarily know everything is going to be kind of the natural tendency, I think, in this, in this new instance. So, and I want to say, first off, I fully do not expect what I'm about to say could happen, to happen at all. But I do believe it's kind of part of our jobs to try to anticipate worst-case scenario. So, in terms of annual permits, I can't say for sure how many people are going to want one of these at this point. So, using that, kind of that 150 cars as a guide, I'd still really feel a bit more comfortable and would even propose a limit of 300 annual passes, so that would be double what we currently anticipate or what we see each night to kind of act as that safeguard, which I think then could be changed or reduced as we get some of the actual numbers over the course of the, you know, six months. So, I know there wasn't a ton of appetite for that last time, but I thought it necessary to kind of, to bring it up again.
Thank you. Mr. Geinzer?
And just food for thought as you're considering that, and I agree with you, Mayor Pro Tem. I, based on practice and what we're seeing out there, and based on the restrictions here, I don't see 300 us getting there. However, let's say I'm applicant 301, and I have a true hardship. Now I have to tell them, you can't get one because we've hit the cap. And so, that puts us in a tricky spot. And certainly, if that's the council policy, we're going to make that work. And again, I don't think we're going to hit 300, based on what we've observed more recently, but also the feedback we've gotten from our officers over what we've seen over the years. So, I would just ask that you consider that as you deliberate. Would we be against it? I wouldn't say we'd be against it, it's just if that circumstance arises, it just makes things challenging for us.
So, I guess to that point, then, that would be a little bit more, maybe a broader conversation. At some point, I think everyone here on council would feel uncomfortable with a certain number of cars parked on the street at night. So, whatever each individual member's number is, is very, you know, could vary quite a bit. So, I guess that's, I, to me, that is the whole point of the safeguard. And, you know, we will be doing the review in six months. I understand it's not an, you know, kind of an easy conversation. But, you know, by this measure still, you could allow for, you know, unlimited, well, not unlimited, but one per, you know, household. So, what, 6,000 or something like that, whatever it is the total?
You could have multiple per household.
So, that's just my initial thought.
Councilmember Henan?
I also support a cap. And my thinking is if we start to approach 300, we have gotten the criteria wrong. And so, we put the cap, we, we have a safeguard. I think a lot of people, I would feel more comfortable with it, I think a lot of people would feel more comfortable with it. And if we start to see that we are approaching that, then it's time to revisit the cap and the criteria to see why are we having so many more than we're anticipating? And can start essentially tightening the screws on the requirements. Because my overall goal, my overall hope is this, this is part of an entire system that we've talked about, you know, including the increased parking fees that will incentivize people to get their cars off of the streets. And my hope is that we actually see less than the average of 150 each. And so if we're starting to go more than that, then that isn't where I want to be. So, I want to, but a 300 limit makes me comfortable that, you know, some safeguards there.
Councilmember Black?
Yeah, I'll just say I trust the work that our staff has done, I trust the numbers that Jordan gave us in terms of what he's, he and his team are seeing at night. I don't think we're going to get anywhere near 300. I agree with Councilmember Henan that if we, if we get near 300, then I think we have to revisit our criterion. So, I wouldn't, I would not have a problem supporting the cap of 300 in the spirit of cooperation with my fellow council members, because I genuinely, honestly, just don't think we're going to get there, so I would be willing to support that.
Thank you.
Alright, so I'm going to be the naysayer, two different points, though. I don't support the cap, simply because while I do share some of those concerns, we moved away from true need to mostly need. We're counting all garages, whether you have a two-car garage, a three-car garage, as one. So, my concern is that there is someone who is applicant 307, who has a truly need-based situation, and we've given away, since we're, 70 different permits already for someone who has a garage full of things, or it's more convenient, but they meet those things. And then this is probably also for our attorney as well, so sorry to throw a softball at you here. I also have concerns, what if applicant 301 has a handicap condition? And now, the first person we're turning away could potentially have some kind of discriminatory complaint? And I think that is not a place that we want to be as a city. So, unless we're going to be true need, I'm not comfortable with the cap. And then, also for consideration, something that occurred to me earlier, and I don't know if we need to look at, if the need is based on some kind of mobility, accessibility, handicap-type condition, should we still be charging the $300? I want to just make sure that there's no issues from like a compliance standpoint with that.
So, addressing the first question about sort of an equal protection issue, actually, when I heard the term "cap," I actually started looking that up immediately, because that was the first thing that went off. I think that warrants additional investigation to ensure that, because it is that 300 and first person who may have some sort of legitimate use, and then they feel discriminated against just because an arbitrary number was hit, and therefore they don't get to utilize it. And that's where that concern arises, so I think that's warrants more. I don't think I can give a definite answer right now, but it's definitely something worth looking more into. The second question regarding the fee, I, I don't necessarily see a problem with that, because with any given thing, there's administrative costs and overhead that goes with reviewing these and handing them out, printing them out. You could potentially, like many other things, have some sort of hardship waiver, where if you demonstrate that you have additional, and that could be a consideration, but that's just my thought. I don't necessarily see that as a problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Geinzer?
I was just going to throw out one other factor that we talked about, and this is not a great analogy, so...
Oh, boy.
I don't think these will be like Taylor Swift tickets, but we were a little concerned that if we limited the number, does it create a false sense of urgency to get yours before they're gone? So, again, these are some of the things that staff were kind of trying to hash through with this. But, again, we leave it to you all.
Councilmember Black?
Do we have, and forgive me, Director Kapalansky, I don't know if this is a question for you or a question for you, Jordan. I mean, just common sense-wise, can we do some prioritization? I mean, can we do some outreach to our corner lots and just say, hey, this is coming? Do you want to get in line? Do you want to get in line first to make sure that our, that we're taking care of them first? I mean, do you see some value, either of you, in, in doing that? Because you, you're out there, Jordan, so you know, I don't want to call them the problem children, maybe the challenged properties, right? You know the lots that are the most challenged, and who need this the most. Do you think they would benefit from that outreach to say, hey, this is happening, make sure you, you get there and get signed up?
I'm not sure, to be honest. I think it can't hurt to go door-to-door, be obviously pretty labor-intensive. I think a lot of this is going to come about, just unfortunately, some of it's going to be this, we can do everything we can communication-wise, but some of this is just going to be a trickle event where I got a $50 ticket and my eyes went like this, and what are the options? If it's going to open some eyes. You know, again, I think, I don't think we're going to hit it. I think we're going to see a reduction of 150. I'm pretty confident on that, you know, just over the years, looking at this, a lot of this is just people that don't want to move their cars back. So to say as 100% no, but I really think we're going to be, we're going to see a reduction just based on the increase. It might take a few months for it to trickle down. But I think it's going to, there's going to be a reduction. It's really just that, I think there's going to be a small percentage of people that need that hardship. And it's not free. They're going to pay for it. So.
And if I could, oh, sorry, can I add one thing?
I was just going to say one thing to remember about the communications we talked about. Is before this goes 100% into effect, as our officers are out on the street and they see somebody that would be in violation of this, we've got this warning card or whatever that we were going to provide there with access to the information. So that'll be a part of that communication out there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Business card already on order with a QR code on it and.
Perfect.
Okay, let's design it. So that's the idea, though, even if they get a citation, they're also going to get heads up how to do this problem.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Henon.
Okay. What if instead of a cap, we got a weekly or bi-weekly update? What's the current count? If any of us start to get uncomfortable, we can say, okay, now let's, let's discuss.
That's, that's an easy thing. That's an easy one if council's interested in that.
I feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
Perfect.
Sound good to you guys?
Yeah, that, that's easy, and that kind of piggybacks on something I was going to point out. Since this is a policy, it allows staff and council to be much more nimble. This can be changed in, in one meeting as opposed to two meetings and then a month delay after that.
Absolutely. Okay, so. Any, before, before I go to public comment, are we discussing the fee now?
You guys need to set the fee. Because ultimately what we're hoping for is upon approval of this in final form, that's going to trigger, okay, this is really happening. Now I am sending actual letterhead to the court to request the change on the ticket price. Because again, this was like a whole package effort here.
So we're going from $10 for an overnight parking ticket to 50?
Which will match all of our other parking-related violations.
And then the annual pass we have right now, we're suggesting $300. Does council, would anyone like to deliberate that?
Just one clarifying question. The 15 overnight passes that someone is eligible for, the one timers, there's no fee attached to those, correct?
Correct. No fee.
Just confirm.
Sure.
Correct.
Councilmember Henon.
Sounds like I might beat the minority. I would prefer $500.
I mean, I, I, kind of in the work session in here, I don't feel like I can support this at all. Because I like parts of it. I don't like the corner lots. I don't like the one car, like a three-car garage could be counted as one. I don't think that's fair to our neighbors to have people in front of their house. They don't have to park in front of their own house. So I, I won't be supporting that. So 500 might deter it more. But 300 seems a little low, but I don't know.
Anyone else?
I'm a little bit more neutral on the pricing. I feel 300 is low if you're thinking about like, okay, a dollar a day, that's less than a dollar a day. I don't want it to be so low that, you know, to the point like, oh, it's only 300 bucks, I'm just going to go get one, even if I don't necessarily need it. Because I do meet the criteria and it's a nice convenience. I also don't want to make it cost prohibitive for residents who truly do need it. And I'm also hesitant to say like, okay, let's make it 500. But if you can prove economic hardship, then it's a different price, because then that's a whole other can of worms that we're not prepared to address. So maybe a compromise of $400.
Councilmember Black, your thoughts?
I think 300 is good. I think we've done the legwork on this. I think at this point, we just need to move forward and see what it's going to be. And I think that was, I think that was something that, that Jordan did a good job of, of saying initially. It's like, we just, there's 100, we know there's 150 cars out on the street, no matter what, so let's move forward, let's see what happens. And then the great thing, you know, you used the word nimble. If we come back in a year and we realize like that maybe we lowballed it, then we can adjust fire, but I think we got to move forward.
Protem.
Yeah, I guess I echo my colleagues' sentiments. I don't have a real hard position on this one. So I guess that would put me in the 400 category. But I'm, I can, I, I feel fine. I feel comfortable with each level, for the various reasons that were laid out.
Councilmember Henon.
Yeah, and, and the purpose is supply and demand, to, to drive down demand, so that it, you know, people want it, they really want it. I would be comfortable with 400.
So a four, a four, a four, you're all right with four?
I think we keep it at three.
Okay.
But again, it, I feel like we've done the legwork on it. We came at three. I think three is solid. But again, three or four is not.
Right, we're splitting hairs at this point.
It is not the hill I'm willing to die on.
Yeah, I'm comfortable at three or four myself, so if the majority is four, I can go with that. And it sounds like it is. So 400? Going once, going twice.
If it's not in the motion, I want to see head nods.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I'm seeing all head nods. Okay.
400.
Okay, so we have that. Any, anything else we need to hammer out? Before I, okay, public.
I don't think so. Anything?
No, no. Okay, I'm opening this to public comments now.
Good evening. Joel Alford, Berkeley, Oakshire. I agree there should be a limit, including one per household, including a requirement for corner lots to be measured. If an applicant 301 exists, revise the policy before January. You already talked about that. The intent is to keep streets as clear as possible for safety reasons. And public safety thinks the majority of people have the space. 400, would it be a good compromise? It's a valuable community asset. But still may discourage efficient use of space on corner lots. Corner lots, most of which have 10 to 20% more square footage. Why not evaluate a corner the same way it is others? The corner on Oxford and Royal that you reviewed, for example, is very unique and not representative of the majority of similar situated corner lots with two-car garage and a driveway. Yet cars are not being parked on the street overnight there. I did go out, as I mentioned earlier. And again, the one example you looked at, you could change the curb cut from 20 feet to a maximum of 25 feet, which is less than the 45% frontage, just like you could do with other narrow drives. There are, however, a couple of issues near that corner. With short drives, one just north, it's a new build with two spaces and what I assume is full two-car garage. And the other just west has no drive, a new build, no drive. Both are often blocking the sidewalk with only two spots required for a five-bedroom house or a four-bedroom house. I wonder whether the ultimate goal is to build out lots and push cars to the street. Comments about the burden to neighbors were dismissed by the manager as current state or daytime thing, but he assumed cars are already in the street, not in the driveway or the garage. I took a scientific approach, verified Jordan's numbers, I looked at more densely populated sections at 5:00 AM last Thursday, including, or sorry, not including St. John Woods, Oakland Manor, or Denler Acres. Those are larger lots. I looked specifically at the six blocks in the western sections of three, four, and five, including Oakshire south of 12, which is 54 blocks, or roughly one-third of those sections, as well as 48 blocks in section one. For reference, there's roughly 300 blocks citywide. Based on Jordan's numbers, that's one every other block. Of the 67 cars in the street, more than 90% were mid-block, not at the corner. With most in front of what appeared a full drive. However, some have fences like halfway back. So it's, again, I, I didn't stop and look what was behind the house. But I did break it down. For example, 10% was due to construction. At least 10% had no reason at all. Cars at the corners were typically only blocking the sidewalk on certain streets, Elwood, for example. Twice as many cars were on the street Saturday, but again, only a few were parked in front of the corner lots with the rest mid-block. Of those trying not to target. I'll send it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate a follow-up as well.
Okay, any other public comment?
Mayor, Protem, council, I'm back again. Love to hear the discussion about the policy.
Your name and city of residence.
I'm sorry, Lisa Pereira, resident on Wiltshire. I've been here 20 some odd years, so. And I was in last month's meeting where the ordinance was passed, and I appreciate that discussion. I appreciate the discussion tonight. I also really am glad to hear that this is being looked at as a need-to-have, not a nice-to-have. And so the increase in the application amount makes a lot of sense. And you'll find out right away if it's too much for folks, right? Because you're going to get feedback. And so that intake will be really valuable, and your check-ins on a weekly, bi-weekly basis will really help with that. So that was really nice to hear. I, I would say that it might be nice over time as data is collected to continue to evaluate ways to add to the data collection. Aerial is great. But as you get more data, or there's other ways to add to it, because looking at this over time, I think will be really valuable, because circumstances change for folks. So a household that needs a permit for this year may not need it when somebody moves out. Or somebody goes off to school, or, you know, gets, moves in with somebody else, like one of the kids or something moves in with friends, or, you know, life happens. So I think having this data be living and breathing and moving makes a ton of sense. Anyway, this is just, appreciate all the discussion. You guys really care about it, and it's nice to hear that this is important to you, because it's important to us.
Thank you. Okay. So I was just going to revisit this motion. Councilmember Henon.
Well, I wanted to, that triggered an idea for me, Ms. Kaplansky. If, this would be a slow time to build up this data, but as we have new builds, as we have people building new garages, if we could track perhaps on a GIS layer, how many garages? I don't know, you know, there's not that many a year. It would take a long time to build up that data, but start to build up that data. I don't know what sort of effort that would be.
Track for new builds, the garages, or the number of new garages? I'm a little bit confused on what the request is.
If someone's putting in a new garage, either in a new house or building their garage, count how many cars it is. We start tracking that. We start building that database of information. We might not use it for 20 years, we might not ever have it, but if it is easy enough to add, if it's, if it is a burdensome ask, then, you know, it's, this is low priority. But, you know, was just a thought on to start using the information systems we have to build up information over time.
I can look into that. I don't want to speak for the staff, because I'm probably not the one that would be doing that. So I want to make sure that they have the capacity to do that, and also that it's easy to do with our existing BSNA software.
Completely understood. Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any final comments?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, so we are not having a cap. We set the price at $400. Is there anything else that you need before we can call for a vote?
We're all set.
You're all set? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. 6824.
Patterson?
No.
Valani?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Okay, we're going to go to communications now. Ms. Mitchell, who goes first?
Councilmember Valani. Okay. All right, thank you. Just a couple of brief ones tonight. Updates from the Environmental Advisory Committee. Get your garden shovels ready. The fall plant sale is coming up on Sunday, September 15th, from 10:00 to 2:00. It'll be on a Robina outside the community center. They will be featuring native plants. So for those of you looking to incorporate those into your gardens, they will have those available. The next meeting of the Environmental Advisory Committee is Thursday, August 22nd, from six, at 6:30 PM. It's on the second floor of the Public Safety Building and open to all. From the Berkeley Area Chamber, this Friday morning at 8:30 is the Chamber Chat at Vibe Credit Union. All are welcome to attend. And then additionally, you can get a super cool bright orange Cruz Fest t-shirt ahead of everybody else. They are on sale for $20 at Urge Juice, Almonds, and Be Well Lifestyle Centers. They will also be available in front of the theater the night of Cruz Fest for $20. And that's all.
Thank you. Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Very quickly, the Library Board will meet August 21st at 6:30 at the library. And Parks and Rec Advisory will next meet on October 10th at 7:00 PM at the Community Center, and that's it for me.
Councilmember Henon.
All right. The Tree Board, still on their summer hiatus, but they have meetings resuming on September 23rd. The Zoning Board of Appeals meets tomorrow, August 13th, to hear two cases on dimensional variances at residential homes. Council Patterson and I were able to attend with several of our staff members. We got a tour of the regional water and waste facilities that Berkeley's a part of. The city's going to be putting together some information for the residents on, you know, those things. But, you know, just two facts I wanted to share that I found interesting. Berkeley uses a million gallons of water per day. And they're out here testing our water every week for water quality. You know, I'll throw in another fun fact. They can tell when we flush the toilets during the Super Bowl, so. But we also got to look at the composting facility. And while we were there, we could see some of our bag tags on some of the bags. And that got me to thinking that I'd love at the end of this season, if we could review our yard waste program, you know, especially the bag tags, reevaluate what, what do we need to do to, you know, what is it that we need to do? Can we get rid of the bag tags? Do we have to keep them? But what's necessary to keep revenue neutral and keep the process going? So I just wanted to explore if that's something that the rest of the council is interested in asking staff to explore for us.
Absolutely. And anyone, yes?
I would support that.
Yes, all around?
Okay.
Okay, thank you for bringing it up.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black.
Madam Mayor, nothing significant to report tonight.
Okay, nor insignificant either, I'm guessing. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you. The Planning Commission will meet on the 27th here in Chambers. And the Beautification Committee will meet the 28th across the driveway there, over in Public Safety. It was a great tour. Thank you to Mr. Young and Mr. McMinn for taking us, getting us there. And we got to meet and have a really robust conversation with our new SACRA manager, who's a new Berkeley resident, kind of a interesting guy, Mr. Griffith, Griffin. But I had some great discussion with them and the staff as we toured the facilities. And my tip of advice is do not put plastic bags in the recycling bin from the recycling center staff. They are asking us to push that, stop doing that. A lot of grocery stores will recycle them, but they are destroying their machines, so. And the other thing, I can't believe how clean the recycling center is. It amazes me how much recycling they're moving, but how clean they keep that facility. So thank you for organizing that for us.
Thank you. Mr. Geinzer.
I have two shout-outs tonight. I know I don't normally have too much to say, but I think two pretty good signs of the caliber of people that we have working here at the City of Berkeley. So first and foremost, I'll let Jack go first, because he's here tonight. I just want to give a shout-out. I just want to give a shout-out to Jack. Whether he knows it or not, the election security plan that he helped author has become the Oakland County standard. And Victoria over here has been getting requests from colleagues all over the state for a copy of that plan. So, I told you earlier, I had the opportunity to sit in and take part of the Cruz Fest kind of final planning, and it's like second nature, these folks. I mean, it's like muscle memory. And yes, they're kind of asking some things and asking questions and, you know, making sure this person's got this and what have you, but it's very smooth. It was really great to see. The last one that I want to share, where did my notes go? So, MML has a program, Michigan Municipal League has a program called sixteen-fifty, and this project is about bringing more gender balance to those top municipal management positions, such as city managers, but also other top municipal roles. They have a mission, I believe this is their mission, that with a focus on the unique skills and challenges that women bring to and face in the profession, the sixteen-fifty project will work to deliver impactful education and awareness to remove barriers for women seeking the highest level of the profession, provide exclusive professional development opportunities, and foster key opportunities for a new generation of female leaders. Their three focus areas are, number one, the elected officials' impact. I'm sure this would not be an issue here, based on what I see from this group, but one of the greatest barriers preventing women from ascending to the executive office is inherent bias in the selection process. With access to all local elected officials, the Michigan, or, excuse me, in Michigan through the league, sixteen-fifty is uniquely situated to address this problem through education and awareness. Number two, professional development for advancing women. Women executives and those who seek to become them face unique challenges. By providing women with content, tools, and opportunities that can help serve their specific needs, sixteen-fifty will develop strong local managers and strong local communities. And last but not least, number three, developing tomorrow's women managers. In order to achieve greater equality in local government executive offices, we must attract a new generation of women graduates to the profession. And I am very proud to announce that our very own Assistant to the City Manager, Charlena Stevenson, was selected of one out of thirty-five participants this year, out of a total of eighty applicants. So, I'm super proud of her. I know she's got potential, and she might be watching right now, and I hope she's blushing.
She is.
But this is a great testament, and certainly, you know, there's opportunity, should other staff want to participate in this program, Charlena can turn into a good advocate for it. I know a number of women that have gone through that program, including the manager that succeeded me in Brighton, and they are some top-notch individuals that go through this program. So, with that, thank you for the opportunity for the updates.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, anything you'd like to share with us?
No, thank you for having me.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, being replacement Dan for the day.
You may have noticed that Councilmember Baker is not here, and he asked me to, you know, do his communications, so let's go ahead, set that timer. The Historical Society meets tomorrow, Tuesday, at seven PM in the Public Safety Second Floor Conference Room. The DDA Board meets the next morning, Wednesday, at eight-fifteen, also in the Public Safety Second Floor Conference Room. His quote is from Jim Rohn, "Take care of your body. It's the only place you have to live." And that's it.
Nice job, Steve.
Yeah, I'm telling you. So, I just want to piggyback on what you said about Jack. I just want to point out that Jack is, in my opinion, in my estimation, truly a public servant. I mean, when there's a need, you respond. You ask for no recognition. You get no pay. The city is so fortunate to have someone as dedicated as you are with the skill set that you have, and we are eternally grateful. So, thank you. I attended the Michigan Association of Mayors Summer Workshop last week in Big Rapids, and this was with mayors from across the state of Michigan. We enjoyed some great sessions put on by the Michigan Municipal League, and in particular, how mayors can positively impact economic development. And one of the speakers on that panel was Marion McClellan from Oak Park, and she's such a gem. I learn so much from her every time I spend any time with her, and actually, we were in the car together on the way there and back as well. But economic development also is usually, it's a twenty-year process. I mean, when we're talking about how Oak Park has developed into what it is right now, and especially the Eleven Mile, they were a dry city. So, even just getting the liquor licenses in place and having that cultural shift happen in their community, so kudos to them, and I got a lot of great ideas. And just on a personal note, I'm feeling very invigorated, having spent time with my colleagues from across the state. And I know we, when we go to Capitol Conference or convention as a group, it's just really nice to be in an environment where people just get you. We're going through the same kinds of things. We have similar challenges, and I'd love to hear what strategies other mayors and other council members put into place to, to meet the demands and to think creatively and, and to try and keep moving our cities forward. So, with that, Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Close session. Matter of considering convening in closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen point two-six-eight H, and consider subsequent council action.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So, moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson?
Support.
With support from Mayor Pro Tem. Gavin? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Bellany?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Before we exit, just, anyone here, we are coming back potentially to discuss and deliberate whatever we're talking about in closed session. So, we'll come back to do that and adjourn the meeting. You can stay or not stay. It's up to you, but just letting you know what our process is. Okay.[1026.92]
Do we know if they're recording? Put us back.
I know they're a little cubbyhole. Do you want me to check? They're recording us?
Oh, I mean, they should be.
Yeah.
But yes.
Don't want us going down on the technicality.
Amen to that.
Nate, do you know, are they still recording? Yes?
I don't know.
Dennis went to check.
That is one thing that we did is we would say that we won't be coming back on TV. Just because we hit, it was our old staff.
Oh.
Was doing that and sometimes you don't know how long you're gonna be.
Right.
The longest closed session I've ever been was like two hours.
Okay, we're good.
We're good. Okay. So I'm calling back to order the Monday, August 12th, 2024 regular meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Baker.
Black.
Here.
Gavin.
Here.
Pennon.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Belloni.
Here.
Dean.
Here. Okay, so Mr. Guinter, would you like to sum up a bit and we'll...
Nope, just looking if there is any action that council wants to take following that closed session. Now would be the appropriate time to do so.
Councilmember Hennan?
So yeah, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to bring back recommendations to amend the city's rental ordinance to include new definitions and regulations for short-term rentals pursuant to communications held in closed session to discuss the attorney's confidential and privileged letter.
Support.
Okay, support.
Mr. Patterson.
It's Patterson and Belloni.
Full support.
Okay, we got Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Pennon.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Belloni.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, motion made by Mayor Proptam Gavin with support from...
Everyone.
Everyone.
Support everyone.
The August 12th, 2024 council meeting is adjourned.